Budget principles and practices. What we have done, what we're going to be hoping to do. Maybe a little bit of discussion on what you want direction, or we want direction from you on a couple of items that had to do with our practices and principles. So, we're open for discussion on this workshop. So, the first thing we're gonna do is talk, I don't want the back of my head. So, I guess I should move a little bit. Is talk about definitions of some of the words that we're gonna use on a regular basis throughout the budget process. And those words, really, Corbin gave me this phrase, they become the color of money, right? So, green money, we're gonna talk about green money, red money, and yellow money, okay? So, the first one is green money. Green money is ongoing. It's permanently adding to the budget. It can be revenue, it can be expenditure. So, ongoing, you're gonna see throughout this presentation, that word is gonna be green whenever it is in this presentation. That means permanent. One time means temporary, that's red money. And you'll see that that word one time will be read throughout this whole presentation. And then there's a danger zone. And Corbin doesn't know about this danger zone one, but that would be what I call yellow money, okay? It's things I want to be careful that we don't trip over. And they're things that I have found other municipalities where I've worked, we've tended to trip over them. So, every time you learn something, you don't wanna do it again. So, permanently added, ongoing. Here's some examples of what those would mean. These aren't all of them, they're just examples to get you thinking about what that means. So, it'd be property tax, it would be sales tax, it would be utility fees. Things that are going to be set that will continue to come into the city, okay? Some of the things that are ongoing expenditures would be staff, because you're not gonna get rid of the staff unless their service levels change. Operations, the cost of, the maintenance cost of a software program, not the purchasing of it, but that ongoing maintenance of it. Maintenance of infrastructure, a lease on a vehicle. And leased vehicles in this context would be ones that were more like renting, things that we're gonna turn back in, not that we're going to lease to purchase, okay? Temporary revenues would be grants. They would be coming in one time. They don't typically come in every single solitary year at the same level or same kind of grants. Legislative funds, that's one of the things that we get a lot of for transportation, my capital fund. And we thought the road capital fund is so healthy, but it really isn't, because those were dedicated to a specific project which maybe we haven't taken on yet. Our sale of land, so like when we sold all of the land to fund the community center, that was one time. You can only sell land once. And impact fees. And that's important for us to remember, that impact fees are really only one-time revenues. You're only gonna get an impact fee on a certain parcel one time, that's it, unless it changes function. And it would have to be significant change. Temporary, or I'm sorry, one-time expenditures would be the purchase of the software. So, that's that difference, right? So, when you buy it, it costs one thing, then to maintain it costs another. And that's for a lot of things that we do in the city. A capital project, the construction of a community center is a really good example of a temporary or one-time purchase. Now, the watch areas. These are ones that cities tend to fall into a hole with, and they tend to be growth cities, right? So, it would be a West Jordan, a South Jordan, a Harriman, a Riverton, a Draper. We start living off of our development fees. We start seeing those development fees at a million, or two million, or three million a year, especially when an Amazon project comes in, right? Those development fees are higher, all of a sudden then they spike, and then we start living off of them, thinking that our budget has come in at that level. Wanna be very careful, the development fees are not considered ongoing revenues. A certain level of development fees are, because certainly you're gonna have people change out their water heaters, and businesses remodel, and those kinds of things. But the significant development fees, you don't wanna live on for life, or for the lifetime of your city. Long-term grants, that's another thing to really watch. That would be something like a cops grant. The government comes in and says, "We're gonna give you money to fund a police officer for three years." And we go, "Yay!" And then they say, "But you have to keep the police officer for two years after that." Okay, we can do that, but there's no way you're not, you're not gonna get rid of that police officer after five years. That's just not gonna happen. So, you need to know that that is an ongoing cost you're gonna take on. So, that's a watch area I better be careful about. Dedications. This is one that we wanna watch out for from developments that might come in that want to dedicate infrastructure to us, that might take over maintenance, that would be in excess of what we would normally do. A, for instance, would be the daybreak, the lake at Daybreak, right? South Jordan has had to take on some of the maintenance, maintenance cost of that. That's a watch area, you wanna be careful about what you're being dedicated by development. And then legislative funds. Those are watch areas too, because again, if you can start thinking that they become permanent, and they aren't permanent. So, just watch areas. Any questions about any of these? These are gonna occur a lot in this presentation. Okay. So, our general financial goal. This isn't where we are, but it really would be where we want to be. And that would be that the city should seek to use a portion of green money, ongoing revenues, for one-time expenditures. Kinda sounds counterintuitive to use green money for red stuff. But, it mitigates the effect of a change in ongoing revenue. If you take a small portion of those ongoing revenues and dedicate them to one-time expenditures, you're not living on them. Therefore, when sales tax dips, when the economy changes, it's not as effective on you as if you were living on those permanently. This is a goal, this is what we will strive for. It isn't something that we're looking for this year, but we hope to accomplish over the next couple of years. All right, some budget policies. I gave you a pretty, someone pulled it up, the key fiscal management policy practice, that one. Lots of words, sorry about that, but it's gonna be in the budget document. You're gonna see that this has all, this is something new to your city. This is our fiscal management practices. It'll be part of the budget document. And it outlines best practices for the city and things that we want to do. So, it has general financial goals, which was one we just went over, but there's others on here. Budget policies, revenue policies, expenditure policies, debt policies, investment policies. So, I provided these to you to read, if you wanna go to sleep one night, you can pull this out. But I think that it will give you direction on how we best make those decisions in my department, and what I recommend to you. So, one of those budget policies we're gonna go over is a balanced operating budget. So, this isn't something that the city's been doing very well at either. "The city shall annually adopt a balanced budget where operating revenues are equal to or exceed operating expenditures." These are examples of your budgets for the last three years. We budgeted sixty-four million dollars of revenue one year, because we sold some land. We knew we were gonna sell land, and we knew we had a large legislative grant. So, that was a seven point seven million dollar land purchase, I mean, I'm sorry, sale, four million dollar grant that we knew was coming in. But we had expenditures of seventy-three point four million dollars budgeted. That meant that you adopted a budget that said you were gonna use nine, almost nine million dollars of excess revenue, which would almost bankrupt the city. You had about nine, eleven million at that time in reserves. But, that was the budget that was adopted. Two thousand and nineteen, adopted a budget with fifty-four point eight million dollars of revenue for the general fund, with a fifty-nine point two million dollars of expenditures, four million dollars in the hole. Last year, we couldn't close the gap. We did our very best in a short amount of time that we had to do the budget. 'Cause I got here in March, and we had the budget to by the first of May. Fifty-seven point three million dollars of revenues, and you adopted a budget of fifty-nine point seven. So, you said, "We are going to use two point four million dollars of fund balance." It's not really what we want to see when we present a budget to you. So, one of our goals is going to be to make sure that we present to you an operating budget that we believe is realistic and will represent a balanced budget, revenues to expenditures. We're gonna do our best. So, we're gonna talk about budget practice, what's been going on here versus what, where we're going. So, first of all, this is how we've been budgeting, right? And this is our current year, two thousand and twenty. Expense, that's the dollar bills, is greater than revenue by about four percent. So, remember, we just went over these numbers where you adopted those budgets that were like that. Here's what actually happened, like my little guy down there, spiking the sweat off his head. Revenues actually came in right at expenditures, and the reason was is because we had vacancy savings, which was a big relief to, I'm sure, all the people in the finance department. So, this is actually what occurred, even though you adopted these budgets, this is actually what happened. Two thousand and sixteen, you used some of your fund balance. Two thousand and seventeen, you used some fund balance. Two thousand and eighteen, you contributed to fund balance, and then two thousand and nineteen, barely. When you look at that, that tells me that you are like bright on with actual expense to revenues. Hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars in a fifty-seven million dollar budget is three, one thirtieth of one percent. It's a very low percentage. So, you're just skating in right under. A better budget practice for us would be that we budget revenues to equal expenditures, which is what we're trying to do. That's only better, not best. Revenue equals expense. And then they actually, what comes in, is that revenue is greater than expense, and then whatever's left can jump over and fund our capital projects plan. Not the best practice, but it's the better of the practices. So, a thumbs up on that one. We would get some capital projects done, we would still stay under what our target is. And the best budget principle, or best budget practice, which this guy's clapping here, would be revenues equal expense plus what you want to dedicate to CIP or capital projects or infrastructure maintenance. That would be our best world. Okay, the next thing for budget principles, expansion requests. What's an expansion request? An expansion request is the increase of a current service level. It would be adding a police officer, adding a firefighter. It would be building a community center. It would be the Ronwood Park expansion. Those are increased service levels in our community. It would be code enforcement officers. I mean, there's all kinds of things that we could do to increase the levels of service. Those increases can be ongoing or one-time. It could be that you put in a playground at Ronwood Park, or this new Wild West playground. That's a one-time expenditure. Well, we'll need to maintain it over time. It's, it's not very much money to do that. So, that would be really considered an increased service level that was a one-time. I forgot to color those words. Those should be red and green. They were previously referred to as green sheets, so you've seen them in the past. And examples would be adding staff, reclassifying those staff, so saying that a certain level of a person, their position isn't at the right level. Infrastructure improvements that would change the level of service. When do we consider expansion requests? What do we ask? What should you ask when we ask for expansion requests? Where's the revenue gonna come from? What source is coming, is going to fund this expansion request? What's the priority of it against all other requests? That's the part that sometimes gets lost. Sometimes it's really easy for us to listen to a passionate plea for an expansion request from a particular department, forgetting that there is a larger picture that has all the departments all at once in there. So, we need to make sure that we're looking at them all at the same time. And the what does this request impact on current and future resources? Might look really good right now, but what's it gonna make, or what are we going to have to bring to the table later to support that expansion? Mid-year budget exam, expansion examples. So, these actually did occur this year, okay? And this first one just changed about thirty minutes ago, so. "The city received several grants to pay for electric charging stations at City Hall and Public Works. One grant requires a fifty percent match." So, we got a map, we got a grant from the Department of Economic, or Air Quality, sorry. Got a, got a grant for these charging stations. They'll say, "But you have to come up with fifty percent of it." Now, each charging station costs about, oh, fifty thousand dollars, is that what it was? Sixty thousand dollars, something like that. The other grant, originally, we were told, is a fixed amount with no match requirement, and that it should make up the cost of all of it. Now, a little research was done today, and that information wasn't correct. So, what we thought was originally going to cover that fifty percent match wasn't really the case, that they maxed out at twenty-five, so we would've had to cover twenty-five percent of it. This is a mid-year expansion. If the full cost of it was covered, I would've said, "You know what, that's fine. We're gonna take the free money, take the stuff," right? We would've come to you and said, "Can we get this grant? Can we buy this stuff? Let's go." But this one required us to put in twenty-eight thousand dollars. And in the big scheme of things, was that really a high priority? Probably not. So, this mid-year budget expansion request is just sitting on a table, and we'll bring it to you in July with the rest of the requests, and you can decide how you want to treat them. Another one. "A department has a vacant position for six months with a savings of forty thousand dollars. Department's not ready to fill that position, but they wanna reclassify the position at up to a higher grade, so they feel like it wasn't at the right place in the first place. Forty thousand dollars is more than enough to cover that increase for the fiscal year. The department won't go over their budget." Why not? Because we know that next year, that's going to impact the budget, right? And it wasn't in the biggest picture of what are all the personnel requests? And if it's going to impact it, how will it impact other requests? Okay, expansions, we're gone. Reserve levels. Reserves, when we talk about reserves, that's money that we have in, not so much cash in the bank, but on our balance sheet, us saying, "We have these available if you have a downfall in the economy, if you have one-time expenditures you want to dedicate these funds to." Those kinds of things, those are called reserves. So, sort of money in the bank. "The state says that you can get as low as five percent of your budgeted revenues," which would not be a good position to be in, there's only one city that's done that before, "and up to twenty-five percent of your next year's budgeted revenues." For us, out of a sixty million dollar budget, that means the maximum resource we could have would be fifteen million dollars. We're at about eleven million right now. So, we're at about twenty percent-ish. We don't ever wanna fall below ten percent. So, our fiscal policy says between ten and twenty-five percent, even though the state would allow us to go to five. And anything over twenty-five percent will be available for capital projects and, or one-time expenditures as approved by the council. So, if there's anything over twenty-five percent, we put it in the capital projects funds, and you tell us what to do with those funds. Use of reserves. Reserves will only be used for one-time expenditures or to fill an emergency shortfall when a, while a permanent solution is identified. This needs to be a short-term gap fill. The gap fill solution should not occur in more than one fiscal year, and if reserves are used, the city will begin to replenish those reserves as surplus exists, but no later than over a three-year period. So, again, this is your use of reserves, which we've seen before on the previous slide. Some revenue policies we wanna talk to you about. We're gonna bring to you your fees, your consolidated fee schedule with every budget. And we're doing that on purpose, because it's really the time for you to look at those fees and make sure that they're appropriate and are gonna fund your budget, and if there's any fee increases that are going to be needed, and when those fee increases are going to take effect, so as we prepare the budget, we're at the right revenue level. So, fees will be reviewed on an annual basis during the budget process, and will be included with the budget for adoption by the city council. Fees will reflect the targeted level of cost recovery, and may include long-term rate adjustments to address inflation. So, this would be where we wanna put in our solid waste rates, our water rates, our development fees, our animal control rates. And in that schedule, you'll also see, which you've seen in the consolidated fee schedule, the appendix where it says, "We'll do a two percent increase per year, four percent increase per year," whatever it might be, "for a specific fee." Because not every fee should increase all, every year, okay? So, the fee schedules will be coming to you. One-time revenue. So, this is the red money. "One-time revenue will be used to obtain capital assets or to make other non-recurring purchases. The city will avoid using this resource to provide ongoing services." So, on the revenue side, red never equals green. The expense side, red can equal green or red. So, we'll go with those in a minute. Revenue diversification, this is an important one, and one I wanna talk to you about. This is our two thousand and twenty budget, and I think you've seen this before. But this shows you how diversified we are in our revenue stream. Best practice for a city would be to be a balanced, three-legged milk school, milk stool, like the milk mains use, right? So, it's usually a third property tax, one-third sales tax, and one-third other kinds of things. We're a little imbalanced. We're, right now, we're living pretty substantially on sales tax, and our property tax is lower than it would, probably should be. I'm not saying that that means you need a tax increase. It just means that you need to know that as the economy changes, that the thing that we're living most on will change the most. Franchise fees won't change, because you're gonna still use energy. Some hotel fees will change in that franchise. License and permits tend to go down a little bit when the economy changes. But, sales tax tends to be most impacted, and that is forty-one percent of our general fund revenue. It's something we just need to be aware of, and we need to be careful of. Revenue projections. As we estimate revenues and bring your budget to you, we're gonna be conservative. We're gonna be slightly understated. So, even though sales tax may be coming in at five percent over the last two years, likely, we're gonna come in at two percent for our estimate, just because you wanna be careful about sales tax. That's the one place you don't wanna overestimate. Development fees, that's another one, where you're gonna say, "Okay, we're gonna look at the last five years, average it, come down a little bit, just to make sure that we don't end up falling short on development fees, bringing in revenues to our budget." So, it will reduce the probability of a revenue shortfall. Previous year trend analysis, current economic conditions and growth will be the guiding factors in these estimates. The last couple days of the economy definitely are making me think about what we're gonna do for those revenue estimates right now. Expenditure policies. We're gonna do a cost allocation plan, and we do this every year. But this year, we've gone back out to departments and said, "We really want you to tell us how much time you're spending on other funds, like the water fund, the solid waste fund, the stormwater fund, sewer fund, capital project funds." So, they'll be developed and incorporated in your budget. They're gonna be very transparent. You're gonna see the departments and what they believe, how much time they believe that they've spent in those areas. The plan's gonna distribute those general government and administrative costs to those other funds. In the general fund, that is about eleven point six percent of its overall budget. So, if we were to take a cost allocation out and say, "Well, we're not gonna expense a council office, or mayor's office, or finance to the water fund, because the water fund's not doing so well." If we were to say that, it would significantly impact the general fund, to the point of six point five million dollars. So, the other funds contribute to the services that are actually located in the general fund, but are being paid for by the other funds, because we are providing service to them as well. I mean, how much, how many hours we've spent on the water fund alone, right? Too much. All right, some other long-term, our expenditure policies that we wanna go through real quickly. Long-term forecasting, we're gonna give you five-year plans for every fund, so you can see what we're planning on. Some of those will have inflationary factors in there, just so that, but you'll know what that factor is. One-time costs, this is what I just said. On the expenditure side, we can break the rule. Red can equal green or red. So, we can pay for one-time costs or expenditures with ongoing revenues, which is about's practice, or one-time revenues, whichever. And our service levels. Our service levels are structured to provide us with that financial sustainability. So, we are asking all the departments to look at your service levels, look at efficiencies, find ways for us to become better. Can we use technology differently? Can we consolidate positions? Can we, what can we do differently? All right, so this is, I have two slides left to go over, and that would be that I'd like some, some input from you. Currently, there's no plan or expectation of funding infrastructure maintenance or improvements for the parks, buildings, and to some extent, roads. You don't have a long-term plan for those infrastructure maintenance issues. And when you want to discuss a Ronwood Park, and if you wanna increase that service level, where does that come from? Because we don't have any CIP funding in the budget, and we don't have a plan for doing that. It's difficult for us to even have that discussion. So, and roads, to a lot of extent, are only relying on Class C road funds, the new transportation sales tax, and legislative funds that were granted by the legislature. Again, not enough to be able to maintain the level of roads that we do have and their demand. A real goal, some of the cities, two of them that I've worked for, have adopted a goal of five percent of your general fund revenue is dedicated straight over to CIP. It's a little aggressive for us. We aren't even at revenues equal expense yet. So, that's aggressive. But I would like us to have a goal of some sort, that we can get to maybe two percent of that general fund revenue. That's a million dollars a year pushed over to CIP funds, so that you can maintain the infrastructure that you're responsible for. Set a lofty goal, is that a possible goal? Think that crazy.
I think it's a wise goal. I think five percent is even better, because we have a huge city to maintain.
Okay.
And if you don't have the funds, then that's a problem.
So, I did not purposely write in that fiscal management policy for you, because I wanted that input from you. I want to write something that I think that you can support and maybe could be attainable over the next three to five years. Do you think that two percent or five percent is something that you would like to see in this? This is a goal document, this is what we want to see happen, and we're gonna do our best to get there, but it's...
Well, in light of knowing what I know about the budget, I think we probably should do the two percent. I'd like five, but I think two is more of a realistic goal.
And then we can adjust it in future budgets with this policy document.
Chris, is the city never had any put towards capital funding at all? And I'm sure they had it one time.
Yeah, so, where I'm going is, first of all, I like the idea, the two percent. But I like that it's somewhat flexible in saying infrastructure. We used to have the telecom fee that was allocated directly to certain projects. And then the debate that the council had at that time was, "Well, is that really fair to dedicate funds from this one particular source to one specific use, rather than make it compete against everything else in the entire budget process?" Priorities change, needs change. So, if this truly is a need, then it will rise to the top when we go through the budgeting process. So, part of the budgeting process is to make sure that we're wisely allocating the money in the general fund. So, if we're keeping it something nominal, like two to, two percent to five percent, that keeps funding, kinda gives staff the ability to rely on something to be there, so they know that we do intend to make improvements, and it's not just completely thrown to the wind. But having a flexibility as well, saying infrastructure, and not just one specific element of infrastructure. It's still within that category, we have some flexibility. I kinda like it, but yeah, we got into some trouble, and, well, depending on how you view it, with, with how those telecom fees were used and how they were dedicated. And then when, in the end, we said, "Budget's really tight, we've had to cut staffing for parks. Is it really fair for telecom to be totally dedicated to this one area, so they don't have to suffer like everybody else?" So, I, I think this strikes, strikes a fair balance, and it's a goal. It's not written in stone. So, there's still room for reasonability and professional guidance and advice. I don't see a downside.
My main thing is, I don't wanna see funds set aside year after year. If we're gonna set aside, let's say it's a million dollars per year. I want something set, I want it to be put towards something each year. I don't wanna start banking that money, so after five years, there's five million sitting there. So, if we do something like this, let's make sure that we're using the money, because the taxpayers are putting their hard-earned money into our city, and they wanna see something done with it, not it sit there and accrue.
Well, the other thing that Denise said, she, she pointed out that for some of these things, there's no plan for improvement for some of these areas. When we talk about things like the, the streetlight fee, we've got money coming in for streetlights, but we haven't really executed on converting the rest of those, and filling in those dark spaces. Some of these things may need to sit for a few years to accrue, because it's a larger, it's a larger project.
I agree with that.
But we've got, we've gotta have a plan.
Yes.
Well, and I think it's important for your residents, especially, I agree, to see the plan in action, which is why those five-year plans are so critical, right? They can see, "Okay, we've gotta put away this money," and boom, year two, we've got a large streetlight project, or whatever that might be.
Counsel, if I may, I wanna draw a distinction between earmarking a revenue and setting aside a...
Percentage.
Appropriation goal, yeah, percentage. When you earmark specific revenues above and beyond what has to be statutorily earmarked, you can kinda really tie your hands budgetarily and make it hard to work. We're not asking for that, rather, this is an appropriation percentage goal. And we're gonna appropriate capital, capital projects.
We're gonna anticipate that need.
If we're putting this money aside, I wanna see it spent, 'cause I've seen in different, I've been on here, we have certain funds where money's just sitting there right now, and it's there to fix things, let's fix things.
Yes, agreed.
Agreed, a hundred percent. Thank you. Next one for discussion. "The city is facing an unbalanced budget and does not have resources to close the gap. Our new legislation last year gave us a new sales tax dedicated to roads and transportation, right? Should the city dedicate the funds from that new sales tax dedicated to roads to close some of the burden of the streets department cost, and close that gap in the general fund? Or, should it dedicate the funds exclusively to road maintenance, which is falling behind?" And I, and this word dedicate, I wanna make it soft. So, this would be something that we say as a city, we want to, not that be dedicate, and we're not gonna ever touch it again, right? I mean, we have to make these decisions every year. But, you know, I'm getting one point four million dollars of new sales tax revenue. It's really easy to get absorbed into that budget deficit in the general fund. And I could say, "Well, I'll just fund all the streets with that." And that takes streets off of my, off my plate to figure out. But really, that sales tax should be going to that road maintenance project. I'm not sure if it was really intended to close the gap between a general... I'm not sure if it was really intended to close the gap between a general fund operating maintenance department for our city that existed already.
My road has not been fixed in the 25 years I've lived there.
It's never been fixed.
Yeah, but nobody drives down your road, so.
Well, I remember, I remember as a kid in my neighborhood, they used to, what is it called, when they scrape it off?
Road over lanes.
Yeah, and it happened every five years. I lived in my house for 20 years, and it's never been done my neighborhood. And I've asked a question before, why hasn't it been done? And I kind of, I don't know. So if that money's for roads, you know, whether it's the smaller roads in our neighborhoods, or whether it's 90th South, which has three million potholes right now, I want to keep that money on roads.
Instead of closing that general fund?
That's my one vote.
So then, so those are things that, that we want to discuss as this budget process goes on, and as we start presenting our revenue estimates to you, and then our expense estimates to you. These are discussions that we're going to have, and we want that guiding document to be this management practices, right? So that we know what is our best practice, and then how are we going to get where we want to be. So that was the workshop for tonight. Appreciate you listening and learning and taking a little bite of the budget at a time, because I think that it's easier for us all to digest and maybe go in a direction together. So do you have any questions or comments that you want answered?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Next up, Ronwood Park. Brian, like, he...
Yeah, Brian's stuck in a...
A hovel, I guess.
A deposition. He's in a deposition, he's not going to be able to join us, his intent was to join us, he asked Dave Murphy, and they're glad to come. We'd like to turn the time over to the two of them, and I think Don by Sunrise.
Hey, Robert, after you're done with that, come help me.
I will. This next expansion, that's a new computer, right? Mayor and council, is for approximately 20 acres in Ronwood Park. And Nikolai and I have been working with Sunrise Engineering. We have with us Steve Hansen at the front of the room, Scott Peters right behind him over here, is with EPG, Landscape Architects, extraordinary on the project, thank you. We have Michael Spatton back from Sunrise, as well as, I'm going to get this wrong, but Steve, please, sorry, one more time?
Jeff Pudzki.
Pudzki, thank you, also from Sunrise, and he's with, doing PI on the project, which is very important in getting the citizens' input on this project. So we've held an open house out west, had some very good input from that, and Steve and his team will take the way, and you can ask myself or Nikolai or the team, any questions you have, either during the presentation or even after. Steve, go ahead, if you're ready.
Any questions pertaining to this?
Pertaining, well, any questions, if you have a topic. But let's keep it to Ronwood Park.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and I brought some additional handouts. I know you had a handouts in your packet that you received. We've added a couple of slides just for this presentation, just to add some clarity. None of the major content has changed from what's in your packet, but I would encourage you to pass that around.
Can you make sure the update version gets to Helen Anderson, so that we've got the full record available to the public?
Yep.
Oh, sorry. Copy to you.
Okay, so they've already introduced us, so I'll just breeze over this really quickly. Once again, we're a team of two consultants, EPG Landscape Architects and Sunrise Engineering, and we have staff from both those companies working on this project hard, and hopefully through this presentation, we can tell you, or explain how we've gotten to where we're at, and get the information that we need to move forward from this point. Our presentation objectives tonight, obviously, we want to present the concept designs that we've come up with and how we got to that point, review the park program a little bit, review some very high-level opinions of probable cost on these two concepts, and then go over some of the public input that we've received up to this point for these two concepts, and then also solicit feedback from each of you. I'm not sure how familiar everyone is with Ronwood Park and the location, so I thought I would include this slide that shows your existing park here, this is 9,000 South, 8,600 West up there. And you see your existing ball fields here, your maintenance facilities up here, your splash pad is in this location with a little park, has tennis courts and a couple of basketball courts, and then I believe a dog park over here as well, and a play area and some other area there. So the main area that we're discussing for Phase Three is this portion of the park that is outlined in red there. I know that, and I've understood that there's been talk of a rec center in an area over here, but our portion of the project, our scope of work includes what's shown in the red there. So the first step in designing or coming up with concepts of a park is to develop a park program. And with your city staff, we met with them several times, and developed the park program, and I'm going to turn the time over to Scott to talk about that and the concepts.
So there are a number of different things. First of all, we talked about what was existing in the park, and then we looked at what would be desirable for the park. And the key elements that came out of that discussion were multi-use fields. These can be soccer fields, football fields, lacrosse fields, multi-purpose, et cetera. So you have multi-use fields in different sizes. Obviously, the larger the size you get, or you can, you can fit, the better, but there's also options for smaller fields as well. There's also interest in girls' fast pitch softball, as well as other ancillary facilities, such like the restroom, site furnishings, benches, pavilions, things like that. Another, there's a large play area in the park, but there was a desire for a smaller play area, a second smaller play area in the park as well. Obviously, parking and restroom facilities, there was interest in additional pickleball courts. And then there was some discussion about having an action sports or skate park component as part of the project. Any questions on that program? So taking that program, we looked at two, we developed a couple of options and then refined those, and these are the two options, the final options, that we came up with and that we presented to the public. Some respects are very similar, and a few major differences, so I'll walk through those. The biggest difference in the two concepts is that option one, concept one, includes women's fast pitch softball, where as in concept two, we maximize the multi-use fields in the park. We looked at different locations of where to locate those fields. We felt like in this corner was best for a couple of reasons. One, physically, it fits in that space with the best orientation for the fields. And second, right here are your other softball fields, so from a maintenance perspective, it's good to have that association. For the softball fields, we located the parking in this location here, behind the residents that are along Duck Ridge Way. Between the parking and the ball fields, we have this open turf corridor, and with the play area at the end of that corridor. This turf area serves as a warm-up area, a gathering area for teams, et cetera, before games. So it becomes a very useful, active area as you're managing those fields and incorporating play onto those. We located the play area at the end so that it could relate both to the use of these fields as well as the use of the softball fields. In this alternative, we have three full-size multi-use fields, and then we've included two smaller fields on the north side of the existing play area.
When you say smaller field, give me the dimensions.
These are, I can't remember exactly, these are designed for like your U-16, U-14, these are your full-size, you know, professional-sized fields. These would be like a U-12, maybe a U-14-type field.
Yeah, I'm not a soccer guy, so I don't...
So think about it as age groups.
Right, but I'm looking at, I'm looking at yardage.
Dimensions. These, I think, are about, I can't remember exactly, these are like 300 feet, these are probably 150 feet long.
Okay.
Something like that. Both alternatives include pickleball here next to the tennis courts, with a pavilion associated with the pickleball, and then a proposed skate park or action sports facility in this northeast corner. They also both have parking off of 8,600 South in this location. Option two...
Before the option two, the question will actually pertain to both options. The additional parkings, they do not connect to the existing parking in any fashion, is that correct?
That is correct. So both, both parking lots, we have one off of 8,600 South. This one aligns an entry drive with the drive across, or the street across, directly across the street, and then has another entrance/exit location here. The parking down here, there's two drives, there's one here and one here. So we've lined the drives up with those either on this side or down here on this side.
Thank you.
Yep. So on this alternative, we've left this space open, more of an open turf. This could also be programmed for smaller fields, like the U-8, the U-6, the U-4 fields. This alternative, we've left this space over here that could be programmed for the smaller fields. Obviously, this one maximizes the number of fields. We could take and reconfigure this area to add two more fields of the medium-sized fields in this location if it were desired. The biggest difference is what's occurring down here. In this case, the parking parallels Duck Ridge Way, and so it blocks a little bit of the views coming in, but it maximizes more space for fields in this location. And we've located the play area in this location near the restroom building and on the south end of all of the fields. Both alternatives have a path system that works their, its way all around the park, so you could walk through the path. This one goes around the outside as well. This one has a connector through here. This one has a vertical connection through here. The big thing is looking at, do you want more fields, or do you want softball, fast pitch softball?
And where's the skate park?
In both alternatives, we've located it in this location, and it was located specifically here to have a lot of visibility from the road.
To keep it away from the houses, too.
And to keep it away from the houses. One thing that was suggested, and we'll cover the public outreach, but one thing that was suggested is maybe add more pickleball. Right now, we're showing six pickleball courts. One option would be to expand this into this area and either eliminate the skate park or reduce the size of the skate park. There's different opinions on that.
Our residents want a skate park.
Yeah, everything we've heard is a skate park.
We'll get into the public outreach on that. I'll just say, there is a lot of support throughout the community for a skate park. Those who attended the public open house who live around the community...
They don't want a skate park.
Were concerned about having a skate park because of the concern of the element that that might bring. So just, just put that out there.
Element?
Kids' skate park.
It'd be their kids. It'd be our, it'd be our kids, so to bring our kids to the city, which is a bad thing. Never mind, I'm saying...
I'm not expressing it one way or another as an opinion, I'm just saying what the feedback we heard.
That's typically...
Sure. And, and I know other communities have managed that by, if there are, if there is a negative, like graffiti or other things, they shut it down for a week or two weeks, and self, they begin to self-police it, so.
Something to consider.
The other, the other interest was concern about the amount of parking and a desire to have more parking. And that, there, there is an option to include some more parking in this location. We would need to slide these fields down a little bit, but I think you could accommodate that, particularly in this option. It's a little tighter in this option, would have to look at that a little more carefully, but I think we could probably make that work.
Do you have any spaces that you're putting in?
Michael, do you want to go over that a little bit? While he's, while he's getting that, another option...
Says 155 stalls on one and 120 on two.
Yeah, so, so those are the additional stalls that we're putting in. We can also talk about how much parking we have throughout the whole park. There's also some options for parking on the street on 8,600 South, as it currently exists. And the biggest concern is the neighbors worried about people parking on Duck Ridge Way.
It's kind of a long walk, isn't it?
Well, there is a connection right here, in both alternatives. It's an existing connection. The other option is you could eliminate either all or a portion of this area. You'd lose the two fields in this option and add more parking there.
Does anybody in this room know how full does the Ronwood baseball parking lot get? Are we ever to a point where it's too full? Because the soccer fields are a problem.
Oh, it's...
It's not like the soccer field.
You mean like this part right here?
It's not.
It's, for the, for the baseball part?
When there's games, is there issues with parking?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it gets full, but not as bad as the soccer field.
Not as bad as soccer. But we're...
That's the one, when I hear people saying they don't want to park in the streets, because the soccer ground plays, that's what happens, is they're going to park in the street.
But I guess my question is, we're assuming that that's going to be, those are going to be soccer fields and not used for other things like Little League football?
The game's going to bring people, lots of people.
They're going to be used. They're going to be used. I just want to, what I want to make sure of is that we're not saying, that at this point in time, that we're saying that they're multi-use fields, not just dedicated soccer fields. Because I know there are some people in the Copper Hills area that have expressed sentiment to me that they feel like second-class citizens when it comes to youth football, because the West Jordan program can use Constitution Park and so the other things, and they get relegated to some crappy junior high.
Go back to the overall.
Never mind, did I say that?
One of the, one of the reasons for the focus on soccer field stuff was direction from a prior council, because given the future of soccer field...
Trying to replace and reallocate as many of those as we can, so that we can kind of maintain the level.
I understand those.
Anyway, moving on. Anyway, moving on.
So, one idea came up to add additional parking in this location and with the connection here as well. So, that's something to think about. We can, we've done an analysis of the parking for the whole park. I think right now, if everything is maxed out, meaning the fields, the splash pad, the basketball court, the tennis and pickleball, the play area, all the new fields, if everything's maxed out, I think our rough calculation is that we would probably be underserved with parking throughout the whole park by about 180 stalls, is that right? Yeah.
What's that? Is that an ecclesiastical building?
Yes, sir. That's a church.
Do we have a exit out of the park in that area?
So, the new parking lots that are either here or along here line up with one of these two drives.
Okay. They're good. They're good, do that.
We know what we're going to do.
So, there's your extra park.
So...
So, I'm good.
One of the concerns I have about parking, though, is the flow, like having the access off of Duck Ridge Way because it's relatively isolated. Most of the folks using the park are coming from the east side of the city. They're coming down, they're going to come up in here, have to go all the way up and around and down to get up into that parking. So, I totally see these being overloaded while this one is empty. I'm not sure there's a good way to kind of connect back into there from here, but that's...
Well, I...
There are plans right now for both 90th and that reconnection there and the rearrangement of New Bingham Highway similar to what we've just done down here on 78th Airport. And also, don't forget that 8600 South is getting much closer to being under construction. We're two agreements away from moving the detention pond that's in the way of the rec center. That's with Rocky Mountain Power and with UDOT. And then, right now, we're moving into final design on the structure itself for 8600. We'll be designing that the rest of this year and it'll move into construction next year.
So, you mean the flyover or just...
The flyover.
Okay.
Heads, we don't want to park in the city.
So, keep those two other projects in mind as you're discussing this because long-term, you're going to have circulation around the entire park here.
Okay.
Dave wants to comment, Naylor is here to comment just shortly on the parking situation during max use right now.
So, right now, in the baseball complex, that north lot there is only utilized about half capacity and the lot over by the splash pad generally is only at about a half capacity to present.
Okay.
The south lot is always completely pulled by the complex there.
Maybe while you're talking, so, one of the concepts here has softball. Has there been, I haven't heard any knee-for softball fields, but has there been that you know of?
So, little history is, prior to the renovation of the park, we had girls' fast pitch softball programmed over there. When we made that change, they displaced them, they went other places. And so, right now, we're just very imbalanced on baseball versus girls' softball and so we're trying to bring that balance back.
As we were 20 years ago when I used to drive the ladder out of the city.
Yeah, we've got, exactly. I mean, I just want to make sure, if we're going to build softball fields, I want to make sure they're going to be used.
We've only got three softball fields because of the inventory.
Come on, it's a field of dreams, if you build it, they will come.
So, a question just along that same lines because I love amenities and I love sports. I coached my kid's soccer four seasons and I coached the Copper Hills tennis team for 11 seasons. And so, after we'd have practice, a lot of times the players would go over to Ronwood just because at night there's the lights there, so that's really nice. So, when you were talking pickleball, do we want to expand and make a smaller skate park or do we, you know, is six enough? Or two tennis courts? I mean, I know being a tennis pro, if you have four courts, you can do an exponential amount of programs and tournaments than you could with two courts. It's not just double, it's like, you know, quadruple at least. So, same thing with the proposed fields or fast pitch softball. Is two enough? Is that enough to hold tournaments? So, I know it's a delicate balance between expanding current offerings and offering new amenities and with all these new fields, I assume they'll get light, has there been a, you know, what are we, because the lights are wonderful for basketball and tennis, but wondering about the surrounding residents with light. And I appreciate the public comments and I know you're going to be getting to that, but as Chad was mentioning, it'd be nice to know not just the people's comments who came to the public open house, but also true participation demographics to know how many people are participating in each activity so it's not just a vocal minority or so that we get it right because once it's done, it's, you know, it's done.
So, there's three areas of public input and we'll get into that in just a few minutes. So, that'll cover kind of who weighed in and who was contacted, et cetera. So, I'm going to hold off, let Jeff present that in a few minutes. I think these are intended to be, at least the softball is intended to be lighted. I don't believe the soccer fields are intended to be lighted. There will be some lighting in the parking and there will be some lighting for path lighting. Lighting has gotten much more sophisticated with cutoff shields to direct it and to avoid glare in the neighboring residents and so that technology would be implemented as the park goes into final design. Regarding the number of softball fields, I'm going to defer to Parks Department. I mean, they're looking at what they're looking to program, so we're kind of following their lead.
So, right now, we've got two over Constitution that we programmed that are just, they got renovated with the detention pond. And then, we've got one that's right next to the rec center over there. And so, we've got three softball fields in our inventory, we've got 10 baseball fields around there. So, I'm just trying to build a little more balance in that. Ideally, yes, we would want four-plex or five-plex there, we just don't have the space there. And so, we're just, we're trying to get that girls' fast pitch element back in. We are just a sub-lease of the fields, but it's, we've got private entities that reach out to us and we've got recreation programs that reach out to us that want to lease these facilities and so we throw those, you know, we've got more fields, they're going to be filled.
And we've had, I know we've had the public open house and the social media, but you feel the diversity here and an amount of each sport represents the true demographic demand for it. Six pickleball courts, two tennis courts, two, you know, how do we get that mix?
So, on pickleball, we're not going to meet that demand. This is solely just kind of participant court here, it's not tournament scale. I would look forward to that more as we develop that rec center area of doing a lit tournament pickleball outdoor court facility. This is just basically just participants' court right here.
Do we have pickleball anywhere else?
We do not. It's the fastest-growing sport in the US right now and we get a ton of requests for Constitution Park, we're going to be doing some renovation over there, just on two of the courts there to get pickleball into our city. This would be the second site and hoping to get another site in. But right now, it's all this participant level. It's not, you know, fancy lighting, tournament scale, you know, 15-court facilities.
So, we're seeing for a tournament, minimum 12, but typically 24 to 48 courts for a tournament.
Forty-eight. We're not getting there.
But Mike's concern is just making sure the demographics are true according to how much we're putting of each amenity if that's really what the demand is so that things don't go non-used where there's a two-hour wait to get on a pickleball court or, you know, just trying to get it right. Jeff, thank you.
Let's go over the public outreach.
My thoughts on this one, I liked the bottom half, I liked the softball portion. The part that I'm a little bit fuzzy on is where we've got the skate park and then two youth fields up on number one. I kind of like the bottom half of number one, the top half of number two. The primary reason for that is because my kids are mostly little. Our oldest is six, twins or two newborn, but when we go watch Big Brother play soccer, we've got all the kids that are right there. I don't want to be sitting on the east side of that youth soccer field and worried about my little kids running over to the skate park and getting themselves hurt. I'd rather see like the open turf and the kind of off on the west side with the youth, with the youth fields if I'm watching soccer rather than...
Yeah, that's nice if we have the second playground because I know right now, whenever I'm at the tennis courts, you know, a lot of families with younger kids will be over at the playground and the older ones are playing tennis, you know, there's a variety of amenities and you've got some of them on the splash pad, so you've got one family doing three activities all within eye sight of each other.
Jeff, what's a pleasure to be here to represent public opinion.
Do we all go through costs first?
Do we all go through costs first?
No.
Okay, public opinion.
You've got about 12 minutes.
I'll try to knock through this relatively quick and perhaps I can shed extra light on what has already been discussed regarding public opinion. There's two objectives with public involvement and that is trying to build consensus, right? And the other one is to try to be transparent and I say kudos to everyone for that because we have done a fantastic job in that. I sensed a lot of enthusiasm when we had the open house. Mayor, you were there, very little dissent verbally, certainly with regards to the comic cards, there's going to be some dissent in some areas, but again, most of it is aesthetics, right? We're talking about a park here, people get excited about that. So, we had approximately, when I was there, I just approximated, I didn't have a counter, but I approximated about 60 people showed up at the open house on the 20th of November at the high school. Forty-nine individual comic cards were collected, no demographics except for location of where they live, but as far as age and whatever else, none of that was collected. Thirty-five contacts with no com, there was actually another sheet provided that they just filled out, their name, so there was a little bit of redundancy in that, 30%. Forty-four, we also had a representative from, appeared to be like the Utah Convention of pickleball users, you guys recall that, right? And she provided a, it must have been a pack of four sheets with signatures and comments from just pickleball enthusiasts alone. So, I separated those comments from the statistics because they're kind of by themselves. Forty-four individual comments. So, proximity of commenter card addresses to the developer. So, I said to myself, hey, we got the address, right? So, why not try to break out the data based on the location or proximity? Well, the good news is, and I say kudos to your PIC, your Public Information Coordinator for the city, because she actually went out, what I understand, and handed out flyers to all the neighboring cities or neighboring homes. Well, that turned out to be great because we got a great representation here from the comic cards for people that live less than a mile away. Then, as you can see, 23% just over a mile to under four miles and then we actually had about 10% or so for people that were farther away than that. Of the pickleball comment sheets, now you can understand it's not about close proximity, it's folks that could be as far as four, five, six, 10 miles away. So, whether or not we give that a lot of weight and their opinion is up to you. If we can move to the next slide. So, when it comes to the preferred concept, remember, we gave them these four, there is three locations in which, three ways in which we received public input, two of which were at the open house. We gave them these five-by-seven cards and in that card, it just had a space for them, it's very qualitative, it just said, hey, go ahead and write us your comments. There is no categorical answers. So, the only way I determined whether or not they wanted Concept One or Two was when they directly mentioned Concept One or Two or at least strongly inferred one or the other. And as you can see, we didn't build real strong consensus one way or the other, but we're leaning a little bit based on that open house and those 40 comments, or those 32, we're leaning toward the softball Concept One. But again, pretty narrow margin. General opinion of various topics, what I did here is I wanted to create the qualitative data into quantitative. So, any time a mention of a certain topic was mentioned, I gave it a credit of one and then added up the tally. Skate park, as you'd anticipate, since those who showed up were relatively close to the site, there was a bit of a negative dissent feedback here on the skate park. But there were a few positives, right? And remember, there were some children, younger kids that were also in attendance, but mainly adults. Parking size, you'd anticipate this, there isn't going to be a lot of people that are excited about, man, plenty of parking, I love it. Usually, you're going to get dissent there no matter what kind of project you put together because there's always a speculation that we don't have enough. But it was mainly on the amount of parking rather than the location. There were actually a few folks that enjoyed, I think, I remember them verbally telling me that, I really like where you have the location of the parking, which is a good sign. Pavilion size landscaping, pickleball, hey, hey, let me tell you, the people who even lived nearby, there was actually a fairly good amount of people that lived near one mile to two miles away that really enjoyed the pickleball. And of course, that extended into five miles and seven miles as well with the pickleball sheet. Frequency of concern for those who lived one mile or less, I really wanted to hone in on them. As mentioned previously, increased traffic was one, 16%. The biggest one by far, 36%, was that west side Duck Ridge Way parking proximity. You know, there was that access point to get to the park, there were a little concern about overflow parking. Next up is 32% was just, they just didn't mention anything or it was various other things such as blocking my view of the mountains or, there were several other things that were less significant, but by far the biggest mention was the 32, or I'm sorry, the 36% Duck Ridge Way parking. Increased noise was one that was mentioned a few times. And then, all I did here is just a general count, no real preference one way or the other, just if they mentioned speed bumps, I gave them a check. If they mentioned benches, some of them were even, well, how come the benches aren't facing toward the water park? You know, that's how detailed some of the comments were because they might have their kids playing in the water park and they want to be able to observe them. Comic card highlights, just to kind of summarize what I said, Concept One, most preferred parking concerns, pickleball comments, add more courts. That was voiced very loudly. Larger open fields were often preferred over multiple smaller fields. Okay, and I think you were talking a little bit about that. Parking, when they did specify size of the fields, that's how it laid out, people really preferred the larger fields. Parking quantity and location was a common concern as you'd anticipate. Action sports or the skate park, a little bit of like dichotomy here, there was a negative response on the cards, those who showed up at the open house, okay? Because remember, 63% of them represent the locations that are nearby. However, a very positive and enthusiastic response on the social media, which I'm going to touch on in just a minute. The future rec center mentioned with excitement often as well. How did we solicit, advertise for this open house? We did it, or you guys did it through the West Jordan City Hall Facebook page, lots of followers. In fact, I last checked, you guys are over 10,000 followers. At the time these were posted, and that's the post, there were 8,000 followers, it was posted twice, hey, come on out to our open house, we want to hear from you. Well, in that, there was about 148 threads of people talking. More than half were just responses from the city hall staff to people. So, really, it was only about 40 comments in general, but what I did here is put together the same idea. Enthusiastic, indifferent or disappointed, and look at there, skate park ended up being high in the enthusiasm list. So, some of that could be due also to social media users, could be a younger demographic as opposed to, but it's not for me to say, but again, it's just the data that was revealed to me. Pool and community center, you know what that was? A lot of the people were generally inferring, where is it? I want it, it's go, we need to move on that first, that kind of thing. Traffic size parking, as you'd expect. But then again, I do want to make a point here that I sensed a lot of enthusiasm in general. Again, what you're looking at here, there wasn't any ticket signs out there, right, guys? There weren't any megaphones and people screaming and shouting at anybody. It was a great event and I think your public is very appreciative that you've been open to them.
So, I think one of our main purposes here at this work session was to get feedback from you and to understand where to go from here. Once again, the Concept One versus Concept Two, softball versus the multi-use fields, parking, location and size, pickleball number of courts, and then the action sports, skate park, another issue. I understand we're short on time here, so before we finish, you have this, where is it? Here, in your packet, and this is a high-level...
In your packet, and this is a high-level cost estimate of these items. The process that we went through to come up with these estimates is we categorized the different amenities, and they're listed here as you see them. And then, we priced it based off of taking an AutoCAD file, determining square footage, and we looked at recent bids for cost of parks, cost of asphalt.
Can I cut you off?
Yeah.
If you want feedback from us, let's start getting some feedback while we have some time.
Okay.
Well, we have some, we have a few, a couple of minutes.
Tellman wants your feedback. Go ahead, Tellman.
I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering if you want feedback, what feedback you want.
Can you go back to that slide?
I'm a little frustrated because we're going through all these presentations with the idea was, is that we're supposed to be providing you feedback.
Why is, why are the skate parks and the pickleball courts like not included in the red line?
In the red line? So, this was, once the prices were determined, basically, it was divided into a north area and a south area.
Right, but it looks like pickleball's outside and it looks like skate park's outside.
Yeah, so you can phase it, phase it, and the pickleball and the skate park were independent of that.
Price differently, okay, thank you.
It just gives you the freedom to phase it however you want. If there's a high demand for skate park, you put that in first and you, you know, you have the, it's just to separate it, it's just a way of separating.
I thought this was all one phase. Are we talking about phases, the sub-phases now?
So, one of the reasons why it's been divided into other phases at this point is looking at your budget numbers here. And if I am not, if I understand correctly, we're three, the original budget estimate for construction and design is $3 million. So, that would be the purpose for breaking it out, to allow you that freedom to say, what's most important, what do we want to bring in first? We have a budget of $3 million.
For me, breaking up into little fields just doesn't make sense. The bigger the piece of grass, the more flexibility you have. So, you know, you can always, you can always paint them off as soccer and have, but yet, just to make them small fields just doesn't make sense if, because that, all that-
Let me speak to that really quickly. In both alternatives, we have three large fields. We couldn't fit any more large fields in either alternative.
I got that, but when you have two small fields there, then what you're saying is, we can only use that as two small fields because there's a sidewalk between the middle of it.
Correct.
And that may not be the best use of the grass.
So, what I'm hearing with that is leave it grass, don't put the walkway in. And then, you can paint fields, maybe additional filter paint.
That's what I'm saying, at least on that part.
Okay.
I think that's more like what Council McConaughey was saying with, he liked the upper part of the concept two, is that it's more of an open grass area, and if you want to use it, you can paint it, but putting a sidewalk through it seems to me it's making it a specific use.
A lot of municipalities have liked that because it facilitates setting up pavilions and different things along it, et cetera. So, it's, I hear what you're saying, I'm just, I'm okay either way, I'm just explaining why.
So, if we're phasing, I want skate park in the first phase.
That's not in the first or second phase, that's in the fourth phase.
So, we need to convene for the regular city council meeting. If the council's amenable, we can readdress this as our first item after we're done with the other regular agenda. All right, we will reconvene in council chambers in 14 minutes. Thanks, everyone.